Now, it is 7 o'clock on Tuesday, January 22nd. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board that I now call to order. In attendance this evening, we have board members Paula LaCole, Peter Tensing, John Ashmead, Tim Paulus, Christine Malik, and I am Crystal Brackey. We also have Superintendent Yunowski at the table and anticipate that our student board members are likely not going to join us this evening since they did not have school today. We will strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel" as we conduct our meeting this evening. And thank you to all of us who are with us tonight. We appreciate you. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
One second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. Moving into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda. As this is the second meeting of the month, we do have time for public comment on the agenda. We received no advance requests for public comment and no one has signed up to speak this evening. So, the next opportunity for public comment will be at our meeting on Tuesday, February 19th. Next, we have the superintendent update, which this evening contains two items, so I will turn it over to you.
Absolutely. So, we have a large amount of items coming to us tonight from Team Craig Holgy with our colleagues from ICS and WOLD, and they'll be here to talk starting about our district's finishing standards, things about paint, tile, carpet, and all of those exciting things. Mr. Holgy?
Very good. As Steve indicated, we actually have four items on the agenda that all have to do with our facilities project. So, we're definitely moving forward on our work. We have two bid authorizations that have occurred, and you'll have those bid awards later on, as well as the bid authorization and a preview of the high school renovations and remodeling that's taking place. Kicking off here as part of the information proposals is a highlight of the finishing standards, which, as was indicated earlier, is the tile, the finish, the carpet, and things like that. One of the things that you'll notice as part of this is we've worked to create a cohesive system across the organization, so you'll see similar materials used across the organization while at the same time trying to have things unique for each building and having some opportunities around that. So, with that, I'd invite Mike Lassit from WOLD up to share some information and with some support from his team.
Great, so the meeting board and superintendents. And as Craig said, what we want to do is really start off with just kind of how we started this thing when it finishes. So, our buildings have a lot of, I guess what I would say, fun challenges in them in that we have lots of ranges of colors. And so, you go to each building, there's colors all over the place. A lot of those colors really can't be changed, so they find them in materials like the terrazzo floors, great product, glazed block walls, the glazed brick walls, sometimes bringing the exterior brick on the inside. A lot of things that really, they aren't what they are. They're not necessarily consistent throughout the district, and so, again, as I said, that kind of created some neat challenges for us. So, as Craig said, we did try to really work on creating a palette of colors that could be used as much as possible across the district. So, we started off with creating a neutral palette. So, almost all of our buildings have some versions of neutral. Usually, it's the neutral paint, or it might be some neutral tile, that kind of stuff. So, I think the first thing we show here is really kind of the, I guess you might say, I won't say bland, but essentially, it's just the neutral. So, whenever we pick one of those colors, that's something that we're trying to carry in each and every one of the schools. From there, we kind of build upon the palette. As I mentioned, we have a lot of existing colors that we can't change. So, kind of our next step was to create colors that work with those in each of the buildings. So, I think the next board really starts to show some of those things. This one happens to be for the high school, and so, it brings in, again, for instance, you might not realize it, but some of the terrazzo has orange flecks in it, and so, again, it's really playing upon that. The final step is taking those colors and then expanding them one step further to create, to use some kind of an accent color palette. And the accent color palette is a little bit different in that we're trying to use that sparingly. So, as you look at this board, you start to see this whole range of colors, and it might, I don't know if that scares people or not, but these boards are a great representation of all the colors that we're using, but what they don't really do is give you the proportions. And so, again, I'll go back to, a lot of the buildings still ends up being the neutral. A lot of our classrooms are that way, and we kind of contain a lot of that. The colors that we're using, what we decided to do is take splashes of colors. We've really worked on adding those to kind of our high-profile areas. So, for instance, in the high school, and we'll show you some more in the presentation in a little while, but the high school, the new commons area that we're talking about, a lot of the breakout spaces, those are the areas where we've kind of added little splashes of color. Similar things like our carpet. Generally speaking, we have one carpet that is in the neutral phase that carries throughout the district, but then the same carpet, the same carpet with a background can also have little splashes of color into it. So, again, that's kind of what we're doing across the district. So, everything has little splashes of color just to kind of add some interest. The STEM school really follows the same pattern. Again, we brought in, we used the same neutral color board that we used before. This school has lots of blues in it already. Again, locker colors and things that they've done, big blue glazed block walls, that kind of stuff. So, we've kind of played with that and then brought in a little more sparingly some of the accent colors. The dual-language school, as you might remember from the last time we presented dual, we did take a little bit different approach there. Again, bringing accent colors, but really trying to focus on that kind of Latin America, southwestern theme. So, at that school, you're going to find a little more of that. We've brought those colors into the classrooms a little more, and again, that was kind of a request of that particular school to kind of add to their Spanish version kind of identity. So, in a real quick version, that's kind of what we have. If you were to ask me where every color is on the board, I would defer to my team that is here, and hopefully, they know all that, but are there any general questions about what you're on?
Fun to see.
So, nobody's jumping up and saying, "I hate this color," and actually, that's good.
Actually, the first thing that I thought of when you held up the high school board was the mosaic that is in the stairwell. Those colors seem to me to be really associated with that mosaic, which made me wonder. We are preserving that as part of this work.
We are.
Okay, great. I think all of those things will flow very nicely.
Now, the one thing that I didn't show here with regard to the high school is we still, I didn't mention it, but you know, we're still maintaining a version of the school colors, particularly in athletic areas, and so, we'll maintain kind of what's already there and kind of expand a little bit on that as well.
That's helpful, because that was my other thought, is we had the conversation at our last board meeting about the brand standards and brand alignment work that we're going to be doing over the coming months. So, I think it's already helpful to be thinking about the potential synergies between this and making sure that our building finishes are also consistent with that brand work.
And we have some placeholders kind of in the various projects, again, particularly the high school, that may play upon the logo if that changes or how much we use or the letter types and you know, the colors that kind of, so we kind of have placeholders at this moment, waiting to see what we end up with, but it should all work together.
So, we've seen the high school, Arnie Lass, STEM, and so far for other buildings, are you still waiting on kind of putting the other palette for?
We will. We'll start the next design phase for Centennial Sheraton and the middle school, but more than likely, it'll follow a similar concept. So, the neutrals will stay the same, and we'll pick out what are those colors that are in the buildings that, again, can't really change, and we'll kind of expand to it. But again, I think the palette we've created gives us lots of options. And then, we'll go with the splashes and accent color that we have already. And I think the other thing I wanted to add is those splashes of color that are, say, a little more vibrant at times, we're purposely putting those in things or using more like paint, something that can be changed. So, again, usually, the question we get is, you know, "You just showed me trendy colors and in five years are gone." Again, we hope not, but I think that we purposely conceded that that can happen over the course of time, and so, a lot of the things that we have added that color to are easily changed, even the carpet. I mean, carpet has a much shorter shelf life than, say, case work and obviously other things that we talked about, so.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you again very soon.
Thank you. All right. So, we're going to bring Mr. Holgy right back to talk a little bit about the budget update.
And this is something that we now have a chance to look at on a monthly basis, and really, there isn't a lot of change since the last month. This is one of our goals of the financial reporting and accountability showing up here. So, that information's there. If you look at our revenues, we are essentially at that 31% mark where we should be at this point, given other years. We're at 39% for expenditures, which is within a percent of where we were last year and almost right on from where we were two years ago. And so, just real consistency across the board is what we're taking a look at. Right now, we've been presenting these things as the report section, but something we may want to take a look at if the board is interested is we move this into the consent agenda, is something that you receive through that part, so you have access to it, but aren't necessarily needing a full report that way, too. So, if there are any questions, we can take a look at that or discuss that, otherwise, I would just share that for your information.
So, from a perspective of the transparency pieces, so obviously, transparency and budgeting is a good thing that we want to support, and I hear what you're saying is you also want it to be meaningful and that you're a little bit worried that just simply a rote presentation month or meeting after meeting could sort of lose its meaning. Would it make sense if we do put this in the consent agenda, does it make sense for us to think about some sort of a trigger or threshold that would say, eh, there's something going on here that needs to move out of the consent agenda and be highlighted a little bit more?
Yeah, so, and I think that that's the perfect example. So, we can have it there for you to have that review. If you have questions, you can move it out, if there's something that we're noticing that we want to make sure we highlight and are able to bring to discussion, and we would obviously recommend that that just be the report inspection versus in a consent agenda. So, not necessarily a specific trigger, but if there's something that's unusual, maybe we have expenditures above where we were anticipating, so needing to do some modifications that way. We do do a budget update here coming up this spring where we'll make formal modifications to a received transfer, things like that, that are seen as anything different in what our revenue projections for the year or our expenditure variance that are assumed here. So, we have those options as well.
All right. So, I guess, actually, what I'm thinking about is, and you can maybe give us some guidance on this as far as how you'd want to see, but what I'm thinking about is whether it would make sense for, I mean, I feel like the board is necessarily mandated this particular pre-occupation, and we might believe it just gives the guidance to the administration as to what that looks like. You can think about it in the next couple weeks.
One thing I was just thinking, as you were asking your question, as well, is if the monthly reports are in the consent agenda, but perhaps once a quarter, we have it as an agenda item. And so, on a quarterly basis, we can make sure that we're sort of pulling up and doing that slightly more in-depth review. So, that could be a happy medium, perhaps.
Right now, we can continue with the monthly. I just wanted to kind of bring that up as an option.
If there are any other strong opinions, feel free to voice them now or let myself, the superintendent, or Craig know after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And special welcome to our two student board members. You all get a special appreciation for coming here when you did not have school today. So, thank you. So, the final item in this section of our agenda is commendations, and we have two this evening, so how about you read the first one and I'll read the second one?
I think we actually added a third, so I'll do the first couple.
Great, and I will do the third one.
And actually, good transition, because I would also commend our student friends, the Sierra and Diego, for coming here. Obviously, we appreciate their voice, we appreciate their participation, and these gentlemen are so committed that without school, they are still here to have that student voice. Good to see you both.
I got my schedule switched for work, by the way, because I have taken me off Mondays, and so, I had a Tuesday, so I did extra after speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Ashmead.
We appreciate it. We also appreciate if you can do it the day after President's Day in February. All right. All right, so we're going to start with Jen Cotsmith-Crouse at the high school. So, as a direct result of Ms. Crouse's work with Sonia Boyer in Cheryl McRoberts' 3D design class at Normandale, Ernie Lindstrom, on behalf of the Spartan Foundation, made a donation of $5,000 for the Normandale Art Department. I was proud and honored to participate in reception in her honor Friday, January 11th, in the new Fine Arts Gallery at Normandale. So, congratulations to Ms. Cotsmith-Crouse, and it's amazing to have people recognize the strong work of our teachers, so commendations to her. And then, Ritual Middle School teacher Alec Calbo from Parents Stephanie Wheelock, who was also actually a peer reviewer and one of the lead members of Q Comp in In Prairie. As part of chaperoning the Eagle Bluff experience, she had the opportunity to observe Mr. Calbo, who was noted as treating all our students with respect, care, and support. Obviously, our staff are volunteering to give all of that extra time and do the entire week down at Eagle Bluff and go on a camping experience, but he was really there, really supporting our students and knowing that he was there to be patient with our kids, consistently encouraging and supporting even the highest need students, and helping them to try the High Ropes course to really build strength. Watching him interact with students at mealtime was a delight, and he used humor and genuine interest into kids, basically described as tireless and an honor to be part of our system. In short, she wanted to know that Alec's strengths were great, and she's really excited about not just that we are hiring exceptional staff, but that our kids have the opportunity to see some great staff like Mr. Alec Calbo. So, congratulations to Alec.
And the third commendation is from the school board to our superintendent. So, the school board would like to commend and celebrate Superintendent Yunowski for completing his education doctoral degree. He graduated this weekend with that degree in leadership from St. Mary's University. So, congratulations, Dr. Yunowski. And unbeknownst to the superintendent, we also took this opportunity to collect a few additional commendations from those who know you best, so that they can also celebrate and recognize your achievement. We will not read all of these aloud. They are from family members as well as from Dr. Roby, our assistant superintendent, but I am going to highlight one in our public meeting, so I hope you won't be too bad about this. This is from Ava Yunowski, the superintendent's daughter, age 13. "My dad is so devoted to his job and his family. For the past four years, he has also been devoted to working on his doctorate, and it has been well-earned. He has been a great example to me of setting a goal and the perseverance it takes to reach it. During the year when he was writing his dissertation and on the couch every weekend, typing for hours at a time, he still made time to help me with homework, give me attention, focus, and love. He was constantly teasing me about calling him 'Dr. Dad.' I love him so much, and I'm very proud he's my dad." So, you can enjoy all of these commendations after the meeting, but we just wanted to take a moment and recognize you for all of the hard work. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. As always, if there is an item that any member would like to remove for independent consideration, that can be requested at this time. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. We have three items of old business that are returning before us this evening. The first are two policies that are on their third read, as well as a second review of our board liaison assignments. So, first up is Board Policy 584 on student medication, which is an existing policy with extensive changes that we have discussed over the course of several meetings and is before us tonight for possible approval. Superintendent Yunowski?
All right, so you see before you a redline version followed by a clean version talking about student medication administration at school. It's gone through our Safe and Supportive Schools group, it has also worked with our school nurses, and also worked with our special education attorney for the district, looking to make sure that we are following all appropriate practices and protocols. Some of the things that are new in this policy is related to the consent for administration, expected to be collected on a yearly basis. Also clarifying, as medical cannabis has come around since we have been updating things, that medical cannabis is not allowed or something that we have related to this work or related to our work on campus. Looking at how do students administer, how are parents and guardians' roles in that, and what is the school district's responsibility for collecting all that medication and sharing that with students as dedicated and laid out by medical professionals and also by parent permission. So, we have laid those out with the changes suggested by the board, and you have those in front of you, looking for feedback or motions.
Are there any additional questions or concerns about the policy as written? I don't see any. I will just ask you publicly the question I asked before the meeting, which is what happens when policies like this are revised midway through the year? Because obviously, for our students that currently have prescriptions and are receiving medication on campus, I think we want to be very thoughtful about how this could affect them and could affect their families and our staff. So, do you want to speak to that real quick?
Sure. So, as we pass policies during the course of our school year, we will say soft implement them. We do the best we can with our current policies and practices and procedures of our schools to implement, but then full implementation occurs next fall as it enters the new student handbooks, parent handbooks, and also, we train staff and administration in the fall to make sure we're up to speed fully on full implementation of all of our new policies. So, a soft rollout now with a full implementation coming in the fall of 1920.
I will move the policy as presented and revised.
I will second.
So, we have a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy 584 by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the revised policy is approved. Next is Board Policy 543 and Administrative Guideline 543.1, which is a very long title, "Search of Student Lockers, Desks, Personal Possessions, Students, Person, and All Other School Locations." Also, an existing policy that has gone through extensive change before getting to this version in front of us tonight.
Yeah, so this is a full overhaul of two separate policies, one that has been functionally eliminated with some of the logistics outside of canine search and seizure rolled into this particular policy. This similarly went through significant revision and review from the Safe and Supportive Schools team, also working with our attorney to make sure we are coming up to date, also looking for best practices also with our SRO and trying to gather all of that information. We did look at creating a smaller title, however, it was definitely necessary to have this full explanation to make sure that people understood what we were fully looking at in regard to possible search and what those protocols look like. And so, this lays out both the overall policy for how and what shall occur in terms of searches. We added after review, how does one make sure that we are communicating with parents after, if a search is necessary? Obviously, there were things in regard to searching the person of a student, and some of those provisions were completely eliminated because those don't really align to other practices or the values of this team, and just making sure that we reviewed things, adding in all that board input.
Thank you.
And so, again, you have redline policy and guidelines, and then you have the new proposed policy 543 and guideline 543.
Questions or comments?
I would just say I really appreciate the work that went into this and the attitude of not just doing things because that's the way it's done or that's the way it's set up, but really thoughtfully going through and taking out the things that didn't make sense or didn't work of what we actually do.
So, I can see Dr. Clarkson back there smiling and shaking her head, who has come to love policy and really picking it apart with a team of people and really getting into the nitty-gritty of what do each of these things do and do they align to our practices and how do we want to be doing our business? She's excited to be coming in the future with dress code and some of those other things as we're attacking all of those social emotional things in our handbooks over the course of this year.
I will move the policy as revised.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion to approve the changes to Board Policy 543 and Administrative Guideline 543.1 by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the revised policy is approved. The last item of old business is a second review of our board liaison assignments for 2019, which has been updated since our last meeting to reflect current assignments and the new advisory committees that have been created since last year. So, we could take a moment to look at the revised version and would love to hear any questions, comments, or requested changes about these updated assignments, and of course, if there's anything you would like to add.
Just a couple of features to note, something that will be a new feature brought to us by Board Secretary Island, meeting schedule and location. You'll know where the meetings are located, to the best of our ability, we have gathered the dates, the days of all of these meetings to make sure that as we sign up for these, we also are able to publicize and share when and where these particular meetings are. Also allows us to coordinate and ensure there are as few conflicts as humanly possible. We'll continue to refine this as we move forward.
Very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say the question that I had for the superintendent before the meeting was whether any of these are position-specific for the chair or the clerk or the treasurer or whomever it may be, and the one that came up that I don't think we have adjusted in recent years is the Richfield Foundation. Because I did not know that in their charter, apparently, their hope is that the superintendent and the board chair are the liaisons to that group. I'm not sure. You have served as the liaison there for several years, is that right?
That is correct.
Does that come up in meetings at all? I'm just curious for your perspective.
So, it's not been a particularly active role.
Okay.
So, to be totally frank, I haven't experienced value. It doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. And so, I think, but I think if you were having a conversation with the Richfield Foundation to understand what the link is, there is an historic connection between the Richfield Foundation and other charitable foundations, local charitable community foundations that were specifically developed for Rachel Public Schools. It was probably actually 15 years ago that the RPS Foundation, Jim, is that right? You were...
I'm Mr. Haybeck. Never mind. I think it was about 15 years ago if I think about how old my kids were at the time, but Mr. Haybeck was, I think, involved at the time. But when RPS Foundation actually became its own 501(c)(3) organization, and so, the requirement of the Rachel Foundation to have this particular representation perhaps predates that particular legal split. So, I think it'd be reasonable to revisit with the Rachel Foundation what their sort of feeling is.
Sounds good. Let's do that. We can come back.
But again, I think as is generally our practice with our liaison assignments, in order to get the right balance between effectiveness and time well spent, you know, we do strive to make these assignments to be relevant to our work, and Rachel Foundation has always been that way, so it's worth revisiting.
Right. Other thoughts or requests?
I had mentioned I would be interested in participating in the Safe and Support Schools Advisory Committee, so I can be in addition to you or some combination of that, you know?
That sounds great.
So, you add your name to that, and then, were we suggesting a change for the foundation or leave it as it is and review and?
I think we can leave it as it is at this point and review. We can maybe have an offline conversation about the best way to reach out.
Yep.
Yep.
Sounds good. And adding Christine, and then maybe what we can do is I can be a part through the end of this school year and then maybe transition off depending on the direction that the group is going at the end of the school year, and you can step in and be our sole representative beginning of the fall.
Sure, sounds good.
So, we'll add your name to that.
So, I think we could take a motion if people want to approve those changes as we have just discussed in this meeting, or we can bring it back with a fully clean copy at our next meeting.
I think we can just add as suggested and vote on it tonight.
Can I take that as a motion? Thank you, Mr. Ashmead. Thank you, Mr. Ashmead.
I will second.
So a motion by Mr. Ashmead and a second by Mr. Pauls to approve the liaison assignments with the one change made this evening. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the assignments are approved. We have six items of new business and as we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, many of them involve our capital facilities work that was approved by voters in November 2017. So very excited to have a large group here tonight to talk about that and to support that work. So first up is the bid award for work at Richfield Dual Language School. Mr. Holgy?
Yeah, thank you. We are recommending, or the district received sealed bids for the RDLS bid project or additions and renovations on Thursday, December 20th. There were four respondents to that with the lowest bidder, LS Black Constructors, receiving a bid of $9,480,000. It is our recommendation, the documentation included in that includes a recommendation that that contract be awarded to LS Black Constructors, Inc., and that you authorize the administration to enter into a contract with them for the services on that addition and renovation. Just a couple of comments or a couple of questions about the process. These are sealed bids that we're required to receive and it's very specific statutory language and process that we need to follow for that. There isn't opportunity for negotiations of those bids following that sealed bid receipt. It gets down to the second that those bids are received as far as the qualifications. So at the last bid award, we have people racing and making changes at the very last minute with that, and so there's some time sensitivity to that piece as well. So that's the information and recommendation that we have, and if there are questions, we can respond to those.
Questions or comments?
Could you just remind us what the, all of the bids seem to have a letter or reference to the charity bond that they were providing? So what is, how does that work for us?
So there's a couple of different processes. There's a bid bond that's issued basically ensuring that they're qualified to do the bid and will be doing it for the price that they have. And there's the opportunity if somebody totally comes in lower and ends up rejecting the bid, we could go back to that bid bond and go and take the difference between that and the next greatest bid. All throughout the process, there are also bonds for the construction projects as well that follow up differently to that. So I believe the references on this one are in that bid bond and Andy can come up and share a little bit more information and details around that.
So bid bonds are required in all public projects. And as Mr. Holgy discussed, what the purpose of the bid bond is, is to verify that their, that company can perform the work. So when a company gets a bid bond, it's essentially an insurance policy. And so an insurance company or whoever provides the bond, each company is rated to a certain amount, so that ensures that they're not going out there and bidding every project on the street and then they get them and they select and choose. So if they're bidding, say the high school project, which is a large project, $30 million out of their capacity is going to be taken for that bid bond. And then if they don't get the bid, then it frees it up again, but that's kind of the, that's the thought process behind it. The other bonds that are required in the contract are performance and payment bonds, and those are again, insurance policy for the district, for the owners, to ensure that the work is performed per the plans and specs. And if the contractor does not do that, then we go down the route of notifying the bonding company and then they facilitate making sure the project is complete. I just had a recent scenario where that happened. There was a 100-year-old electrical company in St. Paul that went out of business this year, and that happened the third week in September, right after we finished a school project that they were the electrical contractor on. So I got in touch with the bonding company and worked through that process in order to get another electrical company out there to finish the work. So and then the, so that's the performance part. And then the payment bond is to make sure that they're paying all of the contractors that they hire to do the work, if there's any claims. In that same scenario, when they went out of business, there was multiple different suppliers that contacted me and said, hey, I haven't been paid several hundred thousand dollars for light fixtures, et cetera. We turn that over to the bonding company and then they pay that. It's kind of a little background on the bonds.
Thanks.
Any additional? We could certainly then entertain a motion to approve the bid award as presented.
I move we approve the bid award for RDLS as presented.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Ashmead and a second by Ms. Malik. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid award is approved. Next up, we have the bid award for work at the Richfield STEM School.
Thank you. And we have that, those bids were received last Thursday, the 17th. We are recommending that we enter into a contract with Shaw Lundquist Associates. Their bid award was for $14,800,000. The range of bids for this really ranged from $14,800,000 to $15,479,000. And so there were five receives, or five bids received in this situation, and we've reviewed that and all the documentations included in that, and so we recommend that that contract be issued with Shaw Lundquist as well.
Any questions or comments about this item?
What did the district have as a cost estimate?
As a cost estimate? I believe this one was about $279,000 over what we had projected on that $14 million, so under 2% of the difference. The RDLS project came in a little bit higher than what we had originally anticipated by about $1 million in that situation. Both of those fell, we had contingency dollars and unallocated dollars as part of our financial planning with this, that we're able to be allocated towards that, as well as we started to talk internally about some opportunities to scale back that a little bit without impacting the design and really impacting the quality of that project.
There are no questions? We could entertain a motion to approve this bid award for our STEM.
I will move we approve the bid award for our STEM.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid award for our STEM is approved. So the third facilities item in this section of our agenda is for the project taking place here at Richfield High School. So student board members, I'll especially be excited to hear what you think. Is Missy or not in his seat right now?
Missy is taking a call very quickly.
Got it. I just, I thought he was hiding behind Mr. Pauls for a moment. So very excited for the presentation item and then we will take the action item afterwards.
Correct. And just as a reminder, this is the third of our large-scale projects that will be occurring this summer and actually implementing starting about the beginning of April with said work and things like that taking place. We're excited to roll out the design work associated with the Richfield High School. And so I bring Mike and his team back up to the front here to share information around this, and then as you indicated, we'll have the chance to have that authorization for bids moving forward.
Did you update the video first? Okay. All right. So good evening. We're here for the bid authorization for the high school. We'll do a quick update. Also, this is kind of some of the scheduled stuff that we went over in the past on the other projects, and then we went through the schematic design process, the design development process, and then we're planning to issue construction documents this week pending approval tonight. We're scheduling based on that a bid opening award of February 26th and then to start construction the week of spring break. And the first phase of construction would be actually in the existing district office space, so we move that over to central to begin work on that. And then with the last day of school, so from April to the last day of school, we've got work planned for the additions, exterior work around the building. And then once the last day of school comes up, then we really get into the interior spaces of the school that we have for this first phase of construction this summer, as referenced there on June 7th. And then by September of 2019, we're done with that first phase of school and spaces are ready for students to come back. And then we have work phased throughout that second school year in different areas of the building. We've been working with Mr. Teresa Rolson to schedule that and work through the rooms that are going to be taken offline, which has been great. With then, so then we carry through that school year with Miss Lipton with select work throughout the building. And then that following summer, the summer of 2020, we do another heavy push primarily on mechanical spaces, or mechanical in the classroom spaces to be complete by October of 2020. The October of 2020 substantial completion date is, we typically put the boiler room, so the boiler room replacement comes the last summer, and we put that substantial completion for October because that's when the heating season starts and we need to have that done. So everything's back and ready for the kids when they come back in the fall of 2020, besides some of that behind scene in the camp floor. Again, the scope at the high school, the district-wide security improvements, ADA upgrades, mechanical improvements, kitchen and serving renovations, and then the LTFM pieces. Specific to the high school, we've got the new student commons, the resource center, improves some building circulation with the length between the two classroom towers, making that three stories as opposed to the current single story. Media center renovation that you'll see some video of and additional conference and flex areas throughout the building. Just touch on the LTFM, it's, the mechanical systems are the big chunk of the LTFM scope, and then there's some finishes, flooring, ceilings, and the bathrooms, which we've heard people love. So this is again, the process that we went through with the planning oversight committee, the core planning group, the user groups, meet with maintenance people to make sure that they're giving us their insight on what needs to be fixed. We touched on the district's standards earlier to have that standard finished throughout the district. And then we're into the design implementation portion where we've got some city reviews that have already been completed. Once we have these documents ready for construction, once the contracts are awarded, then we'll get them into the city for permitting and then continue with our internal coordination before construction starts. So I'll let Mike jump in now and...
Yeah, I think these first couple of slides are really things you've seen before. So it's a site plan, I'm not going to go into much detail here. I think if we move to the next slide, again, we talk about some more of those improvements. Continuing on, I think we have some floor plans again that you've seen before. What I really wanted to get to here is to start to show you some of the, some of the other issues. One of the items, I think we'll keep going to, so this one, I'm not sure if we can get to where the pictures are. I really wanted to show some of the LTFM things, some, we've talked about them before, but I thought giving some hints at some of the damage that is actually out there that maybe not everybody has seen, so they understand really the things that we are replacing, one of the big reasons for this project. So again, you start to see some of the pictures, even that lower left-hand door where you just have things that have out, kind of outlived their time. Moving on, again, we talked about the toilets. Again, I'm not sure if we can get a view of those couple of toilet rooms that are there. But again, this is some of what we see around there, and so again, obviously a need of being changed. The plans really indicate all of those locations of things that we are...
Just going to show her technology.
Yep.
There you go.
So we'll move, again, more of those, some of the mechanical areas, a lot of the things you can see, like even the more physical covers that are just kind of hanging off. So again, more of those issues. What I wanted to really focus on is some of the views, and we'll conclude this after with kind of a fly through that shows, shows even more. But again, this is a view from the main entry looking towards what will be the commons. So again, that will be the view that you'll actually see from that. So again, we're going from here on the left-hand side, now you have a big, I think, Italian music display case. When we're done, we'll have the secure entry, the vest wheel on that left-hand side that will open up to the, open up to the commons area. This is the existing main hallway looking north, again, towards the shops area, and this is what it'll look like when we're done. What we're seeing on the right-hand side there is kind of the alacard, alacard area that's also associated with the open commons. Existing cafeteria entry, again, down towards, all the way down to the cafeteria. Again, this one, similar types of things will be upgraded, the server areas, off to the right is the open commons, and actually that far door down at the very end will actually be the entry to the boardroom. This is upstairs, this is actually looking towards that mosaic that you mentioned before, and this is what the upper commons will look like. So again, you can kind of see the hints of the mosaic in the background, so quite a big, quite a big change up there. This is from the media center, again, looking towards the courtyard. This is what that same view will look like when we're done. Again, overseeing the new stair, you get a little bit of a glance out of the courtyard as well. This is, I think it was referred, well, testing, mini theater, I think most of the time it was the old library, and actually it was a sunken floor, steps down to it, ramps. We will be infilling that floor and this will become one of our, one of our larger flex areas. Similar type of thing, just one of the, one of the corner office workrooms that will, when we're done, have again, one of the smaller versions of the flex areas that kind of occur throughout the facility. Again, another link hallway, another small, another small resource area. This is the view from the main hallway looking towards the gym, and again, get a hint of the commons, the way that's kind of subdivided there. And I think this last one, I believe is, so this is the athletic commons, again, also on Main Street looking to the north. We are moving the concession from where it is between the large gym and the small gym over to this side, and so this is what it will look like when we're done. So again, we're taking up some of the classrooms around the side, really creating that common space, additional common space. And then I think that's going to be better. Actually, are there any, are there any questions just off the notice? I'll take it through a little fly through.
So I'm assuming, I have a question for you, Mike, and then I'm going to ask the students question. I'm assuming that right now in your plans, you are trying to preserve locker space, basically, what, how many cubic feet of lockers we've got now you're aiming for the same. Is that a correct assumption or no?
We're really not impacting it. Quite frankly, there's so many extra lockers in the, in the high school, many of which are just bolted shut.
Okay.
And so for the most part, we really are, our impact to the lockers is relatively minimal. Like we're making a few adjustments and adding a few things here and there, but not a big impact.
My question for you guys, this is my kids now. My kids may be complete outliers, but I know my kids have never really used their locker. Do students use the lockers?
No, no, not at all. I mean, well, I feel like jacket.
I use mine for my jacket every day, but that's kind of it.
I didn't know high school kids wore jackets. Straight. My son refused it.
We're in Minnesota, so it's kind of cold.
I wear, I wear, but I won't zip it up.
I appreciate you.
From my understanding, from how my dad talks about it, he says back in the day, you guys always go to your lockers and you wore a backpack that was not cool, but I tried to explain to him that there's no way you could get to all your classes around the building. And Richfield's like relatively small compared to like other schools at other experience, and you still, like, you need your backpack, you need everything at the school. So no, it's like, no, it's like...
Interesting. But I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like you sort of incorporated what, you know, in your vision with, you know, I guess the reason I asked is because it looked to me in some of the pictures that some of the areas that are currently these big banks of lockers, you're transforming into a different kind of an area and not sacrificing used locker space, but understanding that some of that, we have excess capacity right now perhaps?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the other thing we would do, and again, it might not change whether they use them, is if you remember, a lot of, we're trying to do this healthy access around the building, again, the three-story link, just adding the building to go from, you know, the third story, you know, three-story buildings to other places. We have a couple, you know, a couple additions, additional stairways that kind of help that. So it might be that they can get to, you know, their classes back and forth, but either way it will work.
Okay.
Other questions? If we move through there? So if not, I'll move through. So this is just a, this is a, we sometimes use these not only to present, but also for ourselves, just in terms of design. And so this is kind of a fly through that really maybe a month or so ago that will really take us through primarily the main entry and then in and around the commons area and so you kind of, you kind of just get up to the upper commons. So this is going through the main entry and then into the secure, secure vest wheel office area. Off in the distance, that's it will be the new school store. The new commons area. Currently the hallway down to the district office that will become a student pass Currently the hallway down to the district office that will become a student access center area. I'll jazz it up for the front of the auditorium a little bit. It's a similar picture of the front of the servery, and then kind of the whole district's office, building district office space. The points of this why I want to speed it up a little bit. Got to see the courtyard in the, in the backup, again, it's not quite as large as it is, but we will make it so that it can be used during the, during the warm-up times, need to go. So that takes us over to that alacard area that we mentioned, that gives us a little loop here. Start to see some of the finishes and some of the colors, again, a lot of the neutrals with some of those splashes of colors. You didn't necessarily have all that into this video, but you kind of get an idea, you're doing some of that with furniture as well. Okay, that down south, south of the main hallway, this is actually two, two rather large banks of boys and girls bathrooms as well, all being accessible from the common space. Courtyard on the left. Working with, working with various groups on the furniture, and just how we, how we make that work with today's version of what's out there. A new glass wall that should let in on the sunlight, and we work our way up the stairs. So again, kind of the upper commons, the balcony area, again, that mosaic that's held beyond, this kind of takes us into the, kind of flows into the, the large glass door system, like, you can shut that off at, at the off-hours. And then I think we finish off, it's just kind of a view looking. There you go. Any questions on that?
It's really helpful to see, thank you.
Kind of cool.
Yeah, I have a question. So that's what we have so far, this is what you guys have so far, like, are you guys going to later on show us more of what will be, also see like, the gym area and things like that?
We haven't done that in more of a graphic form, certainly something that we can always look at. The gym itself is, is, you know, we're getting to do gym floor and stuff, we'll also be looking at possibly some upgrades in the lower level areas where the locker rooms are going to start. We could probably show some pictures and certainly some better diagrams, a walkthrough down there is a little, might be a little challenging because the space is a little more confined, but I think we could certainly present something if that's what, if that's what we would like to see. Certainly doing future construction updates.
Throughout construction, we'll be providing pictures and updates throughout this, this kind of just gives you a taste of what the plans show, right? We've got 400, and I don't know what the latest count, how many plan sheets there are for the high school, so, 650, 650 plan sheets, to show the details of construction, and this is just, helps conceptualize a little bit easier for people that don't sit and look at plans all day.
Yeah, sure. I do want to just point out, my, my high school team is, is here, that we're part of those 400 sheets that have really been working at the high school for eight months, so Matt, and Evan, and Courtney, really done a fantastic job, so, just, no, so they're employee employees.
And to sign all the sheets.
Also important. I'm, I'm curious, Miss Yer and or Diego Luis, just, you know, this is where you spend a lot of time, what are your thoughts based on just what you've seen tonight?
Well, I'm glad to see that there's a lot of chairs and tables, because a lot of people just stand around, and I think it's good for people that come in the morning, or just in after school, just to like, sit around and like, talk, and, you know, just, I think it's important for us to have good space for them to do that, instead of standing. Um, yeah, is here?
I don't know, it's different.
It's different.
It's a big change.
Is it a good or different?
We'll have to get back to next board meeting.
I enjoy that there's a lot of light now.
Yes.
And that keeps like, a better feel for us, and like, it just, it just lights things up in the school and stuff, and like, keeping it kind of dark in some places, like Washburn. So, I, I like that you guys had the idea to open up that space and cover it, tap it more light, so that you can be able to like, like, better vibe and vibe.
Yeah, it definitely looks like the natural light factor is going to be increased a lot, which is great.
It was great to be able to take advantage of those corner spaces and that space.
Any other questions or comments?
When these bids go out, is that where the furniture also goes, or is that something that comes later?
Furniture will be a, a separate package.
Separate package.
And so, again, we kind of follow a similar process where we meet with various groups to make sure we understand our needs, a lot like the LTF now, which is really deciding, you know, some of what we can reuse, because not necessarily everything in the building, you know, is due to be thrown out, for instance, and so, again, this is trying to figure out what that balance is, and what is, we've kind of allocated initially to schools. But we've currently been spending a lot of time with the elementary side, really working on the typical classroom layout, so, again, there's lots of, lots of different options beyond the old desk with the open lid, and just kind of exploring that with them, and really, you know, understand what is out there. Some of your schools share, and actually have a lot of that implemented already, they've sort of done some of that, created beyond their own, and so, it's great to have some resources that they could even share some of their good experiences, and so, have to build on that, and do similar things with the high schoolers.
And then, Mr. Holgy, do you want to introduce the action items that are before us tonight related to the high school?
Yes, so I'll bring the action items, just a couple of things, it's been fun working on this project, because you see kind of the transformation, some of those opportunities that can take place, and things like that. And I think what Diego Luis had commented was, one of the pieces that we heard in the core planning groups from the students specifically is, we want places to congregate, we want places to hang out, and having that opportunity in the cafeteria, where there's a centralized area where people can kind of spread out and that creates opportunities there, as well as the breakout spaces, spaces for learning, and changing the learning environment into the different north and south wings and stuff like that, where you can have breakout spaces as well as the forward classes, and the different opportunities there. So, it's been exciting to be a part of that project. We do have that authorization for bids tonight, the request is to issue that, so that the bids will be received and opened on February 26th, and similar processes will be used as our ELS and our STEM, as that's a sealed bid process under state statute, and follows that same guideline.
There are no questions or comments, we certainly have a motion to authorize that advertisement for bid.
I'll move it as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Pauls, and a second by Ms. Malik, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the advertisement for bids is approved. So we are now transitioning away from Capitol facilities, I believe, for the time being, and, next we have revision to Board Policy 302, which reflects updates to board positions, and then Superintendent Unoski, is there any other changes that you also want to highlight?
Nope, on a yearly basis, we do Board Policy 301, our org chart, and 302 position assignments, sometimes we get more than one update to position assignments, in this case, obviously the Board of Education voted on a new chair, new vice chair, and new treasurer, so there are new titles up there on our Board Policy 302, everything else has remained the same.
I will move the Policy 302, as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, and a second by Ms. Malik, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and revised Policy 302 is approved. And then, next we have a resolution before the board to designate polling places for the 2019 school board elections, is there any background?
Not necessarily school board, this is just the elections in general.
Oh, I thought it was.
So, obviously, we actually host the city council election also in these particular locations. So pretty typically, these, these come forward to us typically in August, or September, this year they are coming to us in our first opportunity of the year to prepare for a special election that's coming in February. Typically, it's 90 days, but it's the, functionally the first time we could do it this year, so, we are actually not recommending that we are changing our polling places, we're keeping the same nine, and so, we are bringing this before us so that the city council may hold their special election coming up in February.
And this would then be good for any election that would take place in the city of Richfield for 2019, unless we were to make another change.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? We could have a motion to approve the resolution.
I think that we approved the resolution designating polling places.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik, and a second by Mr. Ashmead, any discussion? As this is a resolution, I will poll the board, Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Mr. Pauls?
Aye.
Ms. Malik?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the resolution passes. And the last item in our new business section of the agenda is to review donations that have been made to the district, of which we are fortunate to have several this evening, Mr. Unoski?
Absolutely, James and Sharon Bowers, son and daughter-in-law Joe and Tracy Bauer in Decatur, Illinois, asked them to donate their Christmas gift, $100 from them to the lunch account for Richfield Public Schools. We are thankful to the Bowers and their generosity to the lunch accounts. Our Richfield Optimists Club donated a set of socks and several multiple pairs of socks at Centennial Elementary School, and they often do a wide range of donations of different clothing to our elementary schools, so thank you to the Optimists Club. Kathy Waldauer donated $50 to the Richfield High School Give Minnesota Org website, this will be deposited into the Richfield High School Random Acts of Kindness account, so thank you to Kathy Waldhauser. And the Minnesota Department of Agriculture awarded Richfield Public Schools a fiscal year 2019 agriculture growth, research, and innovation farm-to-school program equipment grant, so while that is a grant, functions similar to a donation, as they are supporting our ongoing extension of materials for our nutrition services in the amount of $25,000, so thank you to the Minnesota Department of Agriculture.
I hope that we accept these donations with gratitude.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik, and a second by Mr. Tensing, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. So moving into the advanced planning section of the agenda, always begins with the legislative updates, Superintendent Unoski, is there anything that you would like to start?
Things are just beginning down at the Capitol, so no significant updates right now, but there will certainly be things as we move along, obviously, we are in a federal government shutdown, and so, people have gone without checks for the first time, and that is anticipated to possibly occur again, maybe approximately a week from now, or relatively soon, and so hopefully there will be some resolutions to that. And then, as we mentioned before, there is a city council election, a special election, so there are three named candidates going for that, and so we will know about that in a couple of weeks, in early February. That's all I have from my chair, unless there's others.
Was it here that I heard about, I don't know where I hear this anymore. Discussion about reducing paperwork for special education teachers, have you heard about that? Did I hear it here?
I don't think you necessarily heard it here, there's a wide range of special education modifications asked for, and one of the pieces is to reduce mandates like the large amount of paperwork, because there's a lot of estimates about the amount, the significant burden on teachers away from serving students, on those extra responsibilities that means that students might not be served as well as possible, so that is definitely on the agenda of some of the state-led organizations, in a conversation with the Capitol.
There was a bill introduced last week, is that what you're referring to? I think a bipartisan group of legislators did introduce.
Yes, that's what that was, yeah.
A, a package, so I have not seen the details to know specifically what they are looking to eliminate or streamline, but I, I think legislation has officially been proposed at this point. The, one thing I was just gonna share, because I thought it was a really good article, was on the front page of the Star Tribune on Sunday, the story about the special education funding crisis that we are in, and I, I appreciated the story because I think it made the issues more accessible to the broader public, and explaining what the special education cross subsidy is, how this is an issue that involves our federal department of education, our state legislature, and then how it affects local districts, so, if people haven't read that yet, I certainly recommend it, because I thought it was a really good window into the issue, and hopefully it will help us get some traction on this in the coming year, nationally and at a state level. Okay, so next up, any information and or questions from board members?
Well, you think about that, just as a reminder, because this is answering the question that you have, if you look at our budget sheet update that was on page three, just as a reminder, so, Richfield Public Schools adopted a budget of about $13.5 million of special ed, of which about $6 million would be that cross subsidy, or, we received $6 to $7 million of funding, and $6 to $7 million has not been funded and is taken from other areas to cross subsidize special education and support needs of our students, and so that's definitely a vital area of importance for Richfield Public Schools. Sorry, information and questions from the board?
I was prompted, Steve, by, as you were speaking about the city council special election, do we have scheduled, or have we thought about, I know we had kind of been making a practice to convene with the city council in a study session on a quarterly or semi-annual basis, have we got?
So there's a couple of updates in that regard, and I'm going to weave in Board Policy 979, which has to do with fees for the community and how communities are to serve our space. We've kind of paused on both of those as they've transitioned to a new city manager. In initial meetings with our city manager, Katie Rodriguez, she has indicated a desire for a deepened partnership that would actually involve her more significantly than city leadership has been in the past. Board Chair Brackey and I will be meeting with Mayor Reuben Gonzalez and city manager Katie Rodriguez, actually, early next week, and we will look to create some collaborative partnerships back and forth, continue to deepen that partnership, and then also look to how do we do study sessions, and how do we want to do that? So it's not just board and city council, but also board, school leadership, city council and city leadership, because we really want to try to take it to that level. So we should have an update, ideally at our next meeting in February about some thoughts about that, and look forward to scheduling what's going to work better, as we continue our partnership work.
Thank you.
Any other items? Not seeing anybody getting ready to speak. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, February 4th, and will feature a presentation from the Richfield STEM School, and then our second meeting in February will be on Tuesday, February 19th, due to the President's Day holiday on Monday. Next, and almost finally, are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming meeting? I will share, actually, one of the donations just sparked for me, whether it might be time in the coming months to have an update about our lunch payment, how things are going with respect to the, the collection process there, where balances stand, and so on, just because I think it's been a while since we got an update on that.
But if we weave that into a larger nutrition services update, and talk about some of the really exciting grants and some of the amazing things that our nutrition services market does, so we'll do a comprehensive set of work there.
Sounds good. Anything else?
Just as a reminder, in February, Dr. Clarkson will present Vision Card in related to school climate and culture, and creating climate and culture where all belong, and so we'll have some updates on that coming to us beginning of February. The next, and our four, I know we have third Vision Card presentation.
Seeing nothing else, the last item is to adjourn, do we have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
So we have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Malik, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:09 slash 8:10 PM.